Good evening, everyone. This is a February 10th and it is 6:03. And I'm calling this meeting to order. I am seeing Mark. All right, now we're really seeing like Matt up in close and personal. All right, so the first. So the first agenda item is review of the September 18 meeting minutes. I would take a motion for accepting of those rates. Can I have a second, please? I've got Dean. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the meeting minutes of September 18th, please say aye. Aye. Oppose? Abstain? That motion has carried. So let me. Let, let me kind of orient people to what, what we are hoping is going to happen tonight. And what is going to happen is we, because we had so many great questions and thoughts about our secondary. Information, we decided to have one, one night have Fitch High School and then the second we will have the. So next week we will be hearing from the middle school. And so I'm excited that we have our data manager, yay. Lauren, thank you for being back. Individuals from our high school. And I actually will let them introduce themselves for anyone who is online or actually who will be reviewing this later. That would be great, but what we're going to hear tonight is we're going to hear presentations of the data. I think just to keep with the flow, what makes the most sense is that if there's a natural break on the preview around as you present the data. I'm going to let you guys do that natural break to ask questions versus just recognizing people off the bat. So if that makes sense, is that when you think that there's a place where it seemed like it made sense to go down, that would be great. So all you guys can start with introductions and then take it from there.
Before we begin, congratulations, Principal Matt Brown.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Well, Matt, you could just start.
Hi, I'm Matt Brown, principal at Fitch High School. Feels weird saying it.
Carmena Hodge, one of the assistant principals at Fitch High School.
Amy McCarron, six to 12, ELA coordinator and the furniture and teacher.
All right, Matt, take it away.
It's started.
So what are you going to be presenting for us?
We're going to be going over some data from SAT results and AP results from this past year. Soon as I can share.
That's right, to have a technology question.
You should have. All right. All right, so sorry about that. All right, so first thing we're going to talk about today is our SAT scores from last year. So this, this first slide is really just talking about overall, we had 35% of our students that met both benchmarks, meaning the ELA. And the math benchmarks, we had 40 students that did not meet either of the benchmarks. And as you can see, 55% in reading and writing and then 39% in math. And we're going to look at those in some more detail. If you look at the bottom of the screen, those numbers in parentheses are the actual numbers of students. So we have the percentages up top and then the number of students on the bottom.
Yeah. What grade level is this? Is this all 11th graders?
This is all, yeah, just this is 11th grade data.
Okay, so everybody is 11th.
Correct.
Hey Kim, can he tell us how many students are in the 11th grade? And henceforth, if he gets to the 12th grade, how many students are in that grade?
So these are now 12th graders.
These are now 12th graders and I, it's close to 300, a little under 300 for the number of 11th graders.
The actual number is underneath the bar graph, the percentage at the top. So you can see how many students, that 35%.
Yeah, so 78% that both benchmarks, the tricky part here is you can't add them up total. Just because some might be in multiple categories.
Matt, it's a total student count of 220.
Thank you.
Bev, did you hear that?
No, I didn't.
Total count was 220, that, that took the SAT test last year.
So there's 220 students in the 11th grade, is that what you're telling me?
Correct, close to last year.
They're now 12.
Right.
Was that just who took the SAT or total class body?
Just took the SAT, yeah. But I would say it's close to 90% of our total. That was for NESS.
Can you, can you tell me the total class body for the 11th grade?
Probably around 250, I don't, I don't have the number right on the top, I would have to look on Power School. I could, I could tell you near the end or we could look it up, but it would be great if. I'm going to start going through some of the slides and then, and then I can answer some of the questions after. If that works, if you even, questions that you have, if you want to jot down the slide that, that that question's on. But we'll look up the, the total number of 12th graders now that were 11th grade last year. All right, so looking specifically at ELA. This, this chart is really showing us pre-COVID, 2018, 2019, 2019, 2020, and then 2021, we did not test for the SAT due to the pandemic. So this is a nice snapshot of where we were prior to COVID. And then naturally, as expected, numbers did decline because of COVID. And as we talked last year when we presented, we weren't happy with, with the, the numbers, but we, we made an action plan. In hopes to show improvements, but this chart is really showing that along with the state, we are still declining partially for our ELA students. But we are slightly above the state, but both the state and the, and the town of Groton are showing similar trends. The next slide is really how we're doing versus our DIRG. So these are schools similar to Groton's makeup. And what this graph is illustrating is we, we're, we came in second, we're very close to first with Killingley. That had 56% of their, their ELA students meet or go above benchmark. And as you can see, the other, the other schools are, are further, further down, but we ended up second in our DIRG for ELA. And so you can see the, the count there at 220.
Matt, for the benefit of people who are tuning in and don't understand some of the terms, what does benchmark mean operationally to you?
Benchmark, it means their ability to be successful in a college level course. That's how College Board defines it.
And I think Lauren has pointed out to the board before that Camden and Middletown are kind of the most like Groton. Where they have the diverse large populations, they have some areas of great wealth and some areas of poverty. And so that's one that two of the districts that really are closer to Groton's makeup.
All right, and Carmena just, the number of seniors that we have right now is 250. So we had 220 take, take this assessment, so there was 250 total. For different reasons, we had 30 students that, that did not take this assessment. Some of those may be special needs and they take an alternative assessment and so forth. All right, this, this graphic is really just taking a look at our military versus non-military students. And really what I take away from this is we have fluctuation. Some years, our military students are performing just slightly below our, our non-military students, other years, it's opposite. And I think that's, that's really something I would expect because number one, our military students is 21 to 20. If you look on the bottom there in the parentheses, that 21 to 25 represents the range of military students in this, the class each of the years. So we had anywhere between 21 and 25 military students in each of these. And then non-military students ranged from 172 to 195. So because it's a small sample size, and this isn't cohort data, right? This is, these are different kids taking the test each of the years. So we're going to expect variation between each of the years. And this graphic is now comparing our high need students. High needs are determined by if they're, they have special education services, if they are multi-language learners. Or if they're economically disadvantaged, those are the criteria that, that fit our high need students. And really, when we look at this graph, it looks like our, our non-high need students are really kind of staying at, at a level playing field for the most part. We were all the way up to 80% meeting or going above benchmark prior to the pandemic. And it dropped down to 71%, and we're starting to steady back up, hopefully going back towards that 80% of age. Unfortunately here, you know, an area that, that we're definitely focusing on is we, we do have an achievement gap occurring here since COVID that we need to address. And that, that's really, you know, as we get to the action plan later on in this presentation, you'll see some of the steps we're taking to, to look at those students and how we can better service them. Throughout the next year and going forward. And then this illustrates our performance by race. Again, I want to caution, this is not a cohort analysis, so we're comparing different classes each of the years. So as you see there, we're going from 2017 all the way to 2023, minus the two years during the pandemic. So we, we were growing prior to the pandemic, we had a slight decline in most of the subgroups here. Specifically, if you look at our black students, we had a really strong year last year with, with our black students. We only, we only had 15 to 20 that fit in that criteria, but they, they were at 60%. The drop for, for this year is evident in that area, but, but really there's a same common trend with, with all of our, our subgroups here. All right, so that was a quick synopsis of our ELA. This now is, is focused on performance in math. Prior in 2018, 2019, we had reached 40.6% meeting or exceeding benchmark. Which at the time we were, we were very happy with, that was a goal that our math task force was, was really to reach 30, 39% at that time. Prior to that year, I believe we were at 32%. And that was a mission that I remember us trying to take the charge on. After COVID, when we took the test again, and this is what we presented on last year, that, that score dipped down below the state average to 30.1%. And you know, compared to the state average of 34.8. And then last year, I believe by the efforts of our students and of our staff, we had great gains. And we're now over 5% above, percentage points above what the state was at for.
And almost back to pre-COVID.
Back to pre-COVID, close to it, which we, we are very happy about. And then this right here is just like I, we showed the, the comparison with the DIRG. For, for ELA, this is our results in mathematics, which we are all very proud of. When you, when you're comparing us to other comparable districts in our state, the next highest was 25%. So for us to be at 39% is, is really an applause to all, all the work we've been doing in, in math and science, I, I believe. And I'm very proud of this slide.
And it's a snapshot of the district reference group that are districts like ours and also of other alliance districts. And we've always kind of shown that kind of place at the end as an alliance district.
All right, and now, now this is going back to comparing our high need students with our non-high need students. Again, just like with ELA, we're seeing common trends with our, our non-high need students. Back to, I think, pre-COVID levels, right in between what we, where we were performing, which is great to see. We saw that dip last year and it was, it's nice to see that rebound, I, I really feel strongly about. On the other hand, again, just like in ELA, the achievement gap is getting larger. It's crystal clear in this, in this graphic right here, that this is an area that we need to address. For many reasons. And then this last slide for math is just really showing the comparison between our military students and our non-military students. And again, I, just like ELA, I feel like it fluctuates, you know, prior to COVID, we were, the military students were slightly above our non-military. And then it's, it's flipped, flip-flopped really there, but again, I caution, you know, every year, it's a different group of 20 to 25 kids. So there, there should be a little bit of fluctuation between the two. But really, what I take away from, from this graphic here is that our military students are, are competing just as well as our non-military students at Fitch High School. And I believe they're getting supported from their peers. And all the, all the opportunities we have at the school for our military kids, including Julia Cooper, who's done a tremendous job. And the last, I said that last one was lastly, but this, this slide right here is a comparison of different rate, rate subgroups. As you, you guys can see the graphic, pre-COVID, we were, we were showing growths in most of the subgroups. And since there was a decline, most of them, we, we saw a little bit of a rebound. Our black students, there, there's been a decline, but again, I, and I caution again, that those are a different group of 15 to 20 kids as compared to the previous year. All right.
Go ahead. This feels like this might be a natural place. Is there any questions about the SAT data? William.
So I think something that would help the public if they ever looked at data like this is to understand the high needs and non-high needs. And what that, you know, what those numbers look like in other.
Other states.
You know, we're comparing ourselves and we have the G, you know, so we're comparing ourselves to other school districts. Whereas most people are comparing ourselves to local school districts because we live here and so we compare ourselves, you know, Stonington East Line. And so, you know, many people will automatically say we're not doing that well because our data is not as strong as other school districts. I don't think they understand, you know, the number of, of high needs in our area. And so it would also be great to compare other school districts locally and within the G, you know, what is the high need and non-high need percentages for, for all the schools? And then the last thing, second thing I was looking for is when we look at our, you know, racial performance, that would be nice to have comparison as well. You know, if the state has data for, you know, racial performance, to look at that, to not just see how we're doing based on race, but how well are we doing in our district dealing with.
Yes, 100% agree, I'd say I wish that was included in this presentation.
I'm going to recognize Rita and then I'm going to go to Dean.
Oh, thank you. Matt, I, I would like to, maybe you could go back sometime and I'd like to see the actual scores. Like, like, just looking at these percentages, I'd like to know, what are you talking about, like 51%? What is that average score on an SAT test?
Yeah, I.
You know, I don't like these percentages that much, I'd like to see, well, you're talking about 19%. Are you talking about 19% of students getting a 400? Or are you talking about them getting a 700? What, what exactly is this 19% represent? Let's say in 2020, one, 2022 for our Hispanic and Latino population.
We, we can look that up right now, I don't know it off the top of my head, what the actual benchmark number was.
But, but I mean, I would like another, if you could just send it to us and have this explained. I think it gives us a better picture of just, you know, percentages are one thing and they could represent anything, but I'd like to see the actual SAT scores.
And I can do, I mean, we, we've put together and we've been analyzing, we can even, I can share a cohort analysis of the actual average scores for each of our classes. That won't be, I already have it pretty much put together, so I can definitely share that with you.
And Lauren has that information to share, Lauren does have that.
Right, and that, that's like very important and I'd also, many years in the past, we've done it over 10 years. And you've seen a real decrease. Again, we have fewer students than we had in the past in our high school. I don't know if that makes a difference because students now have a choice to go to marine science and science and technology. You know, they're going to a lot of different schools in our area, but I, I'd still really like to see the SAT scores.
Yeah, and I, I just want to speak to that a little bit. I also caution that, that, and we talked about this a little bit last year, but the SAT, unfortunately, you know, the, the stakes for it aren't as. Back in early 2000s, it was a high stakes test that every student needed to take to get into whatever, you know, the colleges that they wanted to get into. And now, you know, that the stakes for the test aren't as significant. But I still think, and I'm proud of our students for how seriously they, they take the test. But we're still facing that challenge of, of finding incentive for them to do their very best on, on the assessment.
And I would have to add that not all students, even five years, seven years, 10 years ago, were taking the SAT. But since the state now uses that as a state assessment, all students are expected to take the SAT.
Well, we've been taking it, at least in Groton, for most students. I mean, we started giving it in ninth grade a long, long time ago, and even in eighth grade, that we paid to have the students practice and take these tests.
Yeah, you were perfect for the SAT, that's right.
And initially, we, we were, you know, the CAP test was, was the driving test for a long time prior to. This being the, this, you know, statewide test.
I'm going to recognize Dean and then, okay.
I just, you know, do you also do the, the other tests that a lot of the military students take? Is it the?
The ASVAB.
Yes.
We, we, yes, we have, not all our students take the ASVAB, but those that are interested definitely take the ASVAB test.
And we, we've never received any information on that also. Thank you.
I'm going to migrate to a mic. I don't know, I sit all day. So I have one question, now it's two after hearing Rita give me some time. The first question is, I know there's a gap in the data. 2018, 2019, and then we go to 2021, 2022, that's a gap of two years, right? So there's a, there's a 19, 20, and a 20, 21, that's what's missing. It's the SAT not taken in the fall. So in 2019, there were students, pre-COVID, who've taken the SAT.
Dave?
Is that measured anywhere, is that useful information anyplace?
The unfortunate, you know, back then, it was, it wasn't the whole school taking the test. It was students that, you know, paid or, or came in on a Saturday to take the test. But it, it wouldn't, it doesn't fit like the comparison of, or how our whole class of 2023 did and class of 2024 and so forth. Because they didn't take it as a whole class that year. In 2020, so the 2019, 2020 year, everything closed down in 2020, so we never took the standardized test as a, as a whole class. And then the, the year after that was the hybrid year and, and the state of Connecticut did not have, have them take the test.
Okay, so in the 18, 19 period?
Yeah.
Was there a whole class taking it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. It was in March.
A whole class, so the whole class phenomenon is in spring.
Correct.
Okay, all right, so that answers that question. The other question I have, that Maria and Rita will do is this, she wants to see scores themselves. And I'm thinking, okay, the scores, because all we know from the students, I'm guessing is how well, anonymously of course, how well the students did, well called verbal in math. And so that's been, I assume there's a correlation between that and these percentages. How else would we know? Because you defined it as likelihood of succeeding in college or fitness or, you know, tech in college, I paraphrase, of course. So I'm guessing that that's key to the scores and maybe. The reason why we're giving percentages is to compare year to year to year. If we're to say, you know, a score of 1,000 in, in 2017, 2018, it's not the same thing as 1,000 in 18, 19, 21, 22, et cetera. I could be wrong, the SAT's been administered for a great number of years. I cannot assume that 1,000 in my day is the same thing as 1,000 now. The test has been rejiggered to keep up with the times and what have you. So is that perhaps why that there are percentages given? So if you were to get us the actual raw score, would it then be unfair to compare those scores from year to year to year? Because they don't in fact represent thousands, not the same, not all thousands are created equal.
Yeah, I think that's a great question and it would be definitely, I think, something that we, we need to look at, what that benchmark number is.
Lauren can help us with that.
So that benchmark for the English Language Arts part of the SAT.
Want to go back to that song?
Which one?
He was Language Arts.
Yep.
So when we're talking about students who are at or above benchmark, we're talking about students who scored a 480 or above.
Except for each.
That's just ELA.
Just for ELA. And so the benchmark for math is 530. So when you look at the math benchmark and you see students at or above, that means that percentage of the total population scored a 530 or higher.
And if they got a 529, they didn't hit the benchmark.
That number is pretty similar to what it was prior to COVID, I think it was, you said 530, I really honestly think it was 540. When we were looking at this, this data back in 2019.
So all our students, all the students taking it. If they were all, if our bar shot up to 100%, that would mean that our students all got 480 or above. That's what that means, okay, literally it's all 100% is a 480. So if you say somebody is, if we're at 56% or 55% of the verbal. That means that 55% of our students scored 480 or above.
Correct, yep, yep.
530 for the math, interesting, thank you.
Zach, did you have a question before we move on?
That may be premature, my question, and I'm, I'm thinking about our number of persons, is when you get results. I'm sorry, when we get results for a given year, I'm now looking at SAT math performance by race, just to run the same page. And it shows for the most recent year, only 18%, only 19%, 18% of African-Americans, 19% of Hispanics, Latinos made the SAT math benchmark. So you see those numbers and are you able, when you get them, you get them in the spring, you get them in the fall, when you get them, does it give you enough time to, to. Revisit your strategy to help that class in their senior year and also to see what you might, might be able to do to help the next junior class?
Yes.
And I hope we don't get to that, they do.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So it'd be interesting to see what the benchmark has been doing over the years and years. Nowadays, the SATs, there's basically like two colleges that require the SATs, Georgetown, I can't remember what you want it. All the other schools, it's, you know, if you want. And so if you talk to, you know, college counselors throughout the state, they'll say, only take it if you think you're going to get a 1500 or above. So for the state to say that this is what we're using to see how schools are being successful, when colleges don't even give a crap about it, is a challenge. Because students are taking it and probably not caring that much about it because they know it's not useful. Because the majority of schools do not require SATs, you know, and so you're going to have your students that are driven to really try and get, you know, a great grade. But then the remainder probably.
You know, and so you're gonna have your students that are driven to really try and get, you know, a great grade, but then the remainder are probably, you know, not going to be, you know, motivated to take this successfully. So the the challenge is that the state is, you know, using something that is becoming less and less significant for students, when they're, you know, thinking about applying to college as the, you know, key tool to see how schools are doing. You know, I think that's a big challenge um, for us and and for many students, because they're not taking it seriously.
And and the correlation with that is the extent to which this reflects on what percentage of students are meeting the grade level, bringing grade level points. I'm not sure how you narrate those two pieces of data. But we could do, we're doing very poorly on this theoretically, and still have a much higher percentage of people at grade level in math in ELA.
And we, yeah. And it is interesting, like, being a math geek that I am, like, you know, looking at the uh, the correlations. I I've looked at that in the past, and our grades versus SAT performance and and how they correlate. And it's some interesting data there. But it is, it is challenging to get them to write, try to do their very best, but there is a lot of value in this test. And and I think in in helping us, you know, inform our our decisions with instruction and so forth, and drive the the changes that we're making in in different subject areas, I I do find value in the test in that in that regards.
Dean?
I think any assessment, whether it's the SAT or anything else, as long as there's, as long as there's really nothing at stake.
I'm not laughing at you, I'm laughing at the fact that the speaker was going.
In fact, it's almost better if nobody feels that their test score means anything. Because what you do is, when a test score means something, which you make the whole class take it, you automatically have two groups, one that's sweating, one that's so when nobody cares about it anymore, that kind of levels the playing field. It does matter in some schools, just aside, some schools will offer scholarships, depending on how well you do on the SAT. Sometimes that's public, sometimes that's not public, but everybody knows. School you're applying to, maybe, they may say, we don't, we don't care about your SAT. Um, but any assessment that you use for measuring is gonna be, is gonna fall in the same category, which is, what do the students care? When I was tested in grade school, I think this is true of all of us, you were given some sort of a, whatever the test was, it wasn't your grade. It was just something that they made you take. So what did you care? Unless it was your personal honor, you wanna do well because you wanna do well. But other than that, no stake. So you're gonna have this situation, no matter what you do, where an assessment doesn't matter to the kids, it matters to us, but they don't wanna give us the information in life, which is, what's going on?
Thank you, Dean. Any further questions? Because I I don't wanna slow the process down. Good questions and great dialogue though. Great dialogue, actually. Go ahead.
All right, the uh, the next uh, set of slides is really looking at our uh, next generation science standards. Uh, the NGSS test that that our juniors took last year. And again, this this number was at ninety-five percent um, participated in this test. Uh, just like in the the previous slides, uh, for English and for for math or ELA and and math. Um, the first slide is showing that, or the first part is showing twenty-three percent of our students did not meet standard. Uh, twenty, I'm sorry, yeah, and then thirty-four percent uh, were approaching standard, and then thirty-four met, and then nine percent exceeded. So uh, we are fairly close to the state. The state is a little bit above us uh, for this test. Um, and if you notice, we have a a big percent, you know, six percent that are approaching standards, that hopefully we can push them to to get into the meet standard section.
And that approaching is within the year. It's not like a whole full year away, but they're very close. So I like to look at approaching, meeting, and exceeding as the population that we've almost got really ready.
When's this test?
This is given.
At the same time.
It's a, yeah. Right out, and quite honestly, in reflecting on it, I think we give a, at least last year, we gave a big push for the SAT, big push for the SAT. And I feel like we don't make that same push for this test, which is something that, it's not fair for our our science teachers and and um, you know, our students perform, we we need to incentivize this just as much as we do the SAT. And I don't think we've made this this a priority.
And also use the interim assessment that the state provides, those kind of questions, because it's really important that, you know, we kind of facilitate it when they're doing particular topic and lab work, to be able to do this kind of work, so that they really understand it fully.
So the the next one, just uh, in theme with all of the other subject areas, this is our comparison with the JURG. Uh, in in science, we were uh, in third, uh, with Killingley and Vernon uh, above us. Killingley, we need to reach out to and see what they're doing for science, because they're doing some some good things there um, in all areas, but uh, science, they're definitely doing something right, so. And then looking at our military versus non-military students, our military students, it's pretty clear that they are very scientifically inclined. Uh, they actually performed ten percentage points higher than our non-military students in in this uh, most recent year, which is interesting.
And even though there were just twenty-two to twenty-seven of them.
Broken down to two different places, I'm assuming.
Uh, that's a good question. All right, so the the next one is our comparison of of high needs versus non-high needs students, and it's the same theme as we as we've talked before. We've had slight declines uh, compared to pre-COVID years, but it it increased comparing last year to this this uh, most recent year. But unfortunately, our high need students, that that same decline is is evident there. So something's definitely going on there that we need to address.
With that class, in all areas, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Questions on uh, science before we move on to AP analysis, AP scores?
So now?
Go ahead, please.
Um, I just for the, for the public, when you say high needs again, could you really find that, just so we keep focused on the same definition? Because high needs for one, in one mind, might not really be addressing. What what is, are the categories of students?
So.
Take that idea, but what students are we identifying as high needs?
So multi-language learners, so uh, those students that are learning English uh, as a second language. Um, also, uh, students that are receiving special education services, and then low-income families, uh, those students that are receiving uh, free and reduced lunch. That that's the three categories. Um, and as you can see, so our high need students is close to fifty percent of of that population. If you look, the range is is one thirteen to one thirty-one. So so uh, a good proportion of our our students.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. All right. So the next set of slides is looking at our advanced placement. Um, and the the biggest thing I wanna highlight on this, which we are very proud of, is if you look across that top row besides the years, you look at the total AP students, uh, we had a pretty major jump last year in the number of AP students. We went from one ninety-two in two thousand nineteen, you guys can see all the numbers there, one seventy-four, and we jumped uh, with a lot of efforts, uh, a lot of the efforts from our uh, students in the Black Student Union visiting CTLs and and inspiring uh, their their colleagues to challenge themselves, taking the the, you know, take it, take a risk and take the highest level class that you you feel like you can achieve in. Uh, so that number is something that we are very proud of. Uh, same thing with the number of exams. Those are uh, you know, over two hundred and ten more exams were taken by our students in uh, AP level classes. Uh, our students that scored a three or above is, was one twenty-two last year, which, when you compare that to the other numbers, the only one that's higher than that was two thousand twenty. But I wanna uh, make sure everybody's aware, in two thousand twenty, the AP test that they took, number one, was taken from home. Um, so it was a virtual test that they took, and it was an abbreviated test. So that's kind of personally, I think, an inflated number when comparing it with all the other numbers. So to me, that really makes that one twenty-two uh, that much more something to be proud of. And then when you look at the the bottom row there, that's the percentage of our students that scored a three or above, which is considered passing the AP test. Um, and that's lower than all of the other years. But uh, I wanna highlight that we had five hundred and ten tests taken compared to three hundred ten. So we have a lot more kids challenging themselves in AP level classes, experiencing what a college-level class really, like a college-level uh, class really is. And the experiences they're getting there is really what's getting them ready for if they're going to commit to college uh, in their future years. So um, we do have work to do in that area to get those scores up, but but we took the first step of of getting more kids in those classrooms.
And supporting.
And supporting them uh, in different ways. Uh, and so we're gonna talk about different different ways that we've committed already, we've been working with uh, to to improve those scores even more, and hopefully get even more kids involved in AP and IB courses.
And I would have to say, I applaud our board, because the number of exams is because between the Department of Defense, NIMCE, um, you know, award that we received, NIMCE was paying for um, exams. Um, we also, the state pays for free and reduced lunch population, and our board covered, so that every child had that opportunity to take the test. And I think there were only eight kids, of all the kids who, you know, were participating, who decided not to take the test. But everybody else did. So kudos to everybody.
Congratulations, Professor. The fact that we had a twenty, roughly a twenty percent increase in the usage of the test is in itself gonna be a role model, peer-to-peer role model to boost the future. So kudos to.
Hey. So this next next graphic is really just looking at our different subject areas. So uh, we we broke this down um, into the subject area. So like for social studies, for example, that's uh, AP US history, AP world history.
AP government.
Yeah.
AP European history.
Um, and then science, there's the different AP, uh, so we broke it up down in that way and and used utilized the averages. So when you're looking at this, uh, as you read it from left to right, those are, it's going chronologically. Uh, and those are the average AP scores that that we've achieved um, from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-three. Um, and again, definitely, we we're we're striving to get all those scores above a three, because that would mean um, that that many more kids that are 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 uh, passing the the AP test.
But check out math. The mean score of three point one, right?
Yeah, so we're very proud of that. The other thing I I, when we're looking at this, and I think the next graphic, we'll talk about this even more. But uh, also to recognize, our math scores are strong here, but our our number of kids, we'd like to see in, we we've had a lot of great increases in in our social studies and our science and our electives and and ELA. But we have work to do to get more kids taking AP count. Uh, I think that number is probably closer to twenty, twenty-five kids each year, where it'd be great to get that number closer to fifty, sixty, and wherever.
I'm laughing at this math, but that'd be something.
Yes, yes, you can.
The dual, dual credit award, so that we can have UConn credit with AP and other universities, so we're looking at that across the board at our courses, to see where we can also provide credit along with the AP, which also provides credit.
All right, so this this graphic is really just showing the the percentage of students in each of the subject areas that scored a three or above. So again, math, three out of every four students ended up uh, passing that that assessment, which is something to be very proud of. Um, again, cautioning you to realize that with a lot of the other subject areas, we've we had hundred and fifty kids take the social studies test, I believe, uh, in in, you know, other subject areas, same same idea. So although those percentages are lower, and we're gonna definitely push to try to get those numbers up, but we need to realize that when we're looking at this data, that that that's a big reason why there's such a disparity. I think, go ahead.
Can I just speak to the social studies as well? I just want to remind also that social studies has the youngest group that are taking AP classes. So our tenth-grade students, social studies is the only one, it's the only department that has tenth-grade students taking AP classes. The first time that they're, for some of them, experiencing a better faculty. So the twenty-eight percent, uh, while while they're low, I think it's still, they're they're also gaining, like Matt said, the skills necessary if they want to take college.
And National Math Science Institute provides the professional learning. We had many, many teachers and participants, and it wasn't just a summer workshop. It was also networking with colleagues, it was um, just in time tutoring with a real teacher, anytime it needed it. So it was real support in real time, and we're continuing that partnership with NIMCE, because we are a DOP desert.
I noticed in the past, this this, and I have spoken about civics, and social studies is a marker for ending the enmity that we have in the political community. The more we get youngsters to understand civics, history, more they're coming in our country. So my question to Susan, we don't have to answer now, is, are there any grant opportunities? Have you seen, have you scaled the resources to bear on social studies?
We did that last year, and NIMCE actually provided social studies, and I paid through our bester dollars to provide the same level training to social studies centers. The unfortunate thing is, NIMCE is not continuing that. So we're gonna look at College Board to see if we can't go another route, but we wanted to be fair and be able to distribute this, and they happened to have it last year, but not this year. And that's a good point.
I'm moving us back to the platform.
All right, in this this graphic, uh, I know difficult to see, but this was stolen from uh, part of the Equal Opportunity Schools report that we had, uh, which, they're doing a lot of great work in looking at how our our uh, uh, low-income families are doing, you know, in taking high-level AP IB courses versus our uh, medium-to-high-income families. So when you're looking at this graphic, it's broken down by subgroups of our different populations. On the left-hand side is the medium-to-high-income uh, members that are in that that uh, racial subgroup. And then the right-hand side is uh, those two bar graphs. On the right-hand side of each subgroup is our our low-income uh, students. And what this is showing you is uh, a comparison of the number of students that were enrolled in AP IB courses uh, in two thousand twenty-two, the fall of two thousand twenty-two, versus the fall of two thousand twenty-three. Um, the one uh, word of con, this is projections, this isn't the actual numbers, because when they gave us this report, it was given to us over the summer. But I thought this was a nice illustration where you can see that uh, based on a lot of our our efforts with Equal Opportunity Schools and National Math and Science Initiative, um, we've gotten great growth in in all areas uh, of the number of students that are committing to take uh, high-level courses. So so we are proud of that. Um, and one other thing that Equal Opportunity Schools had us do was each student made a little student profile, they filled out a survey, um, identified um, champion uh, teachers that they trusted in and uh, would be comfortable with them mentoring them, and uh, shared that, those results back with us, so that we could uh, touch base with those teachers and find each of our students uh, really a mentor that that come course registration time, talk with those students and and really inspired them to to really challenge themselves in taking the highest possible course that they could take. So uh, I think kudos to them and and Fitch High School for the work that we did to to get a graphic like this. And then I, uh, this, in uh, practicing this presentation earlier, I said, first time, as a principal, it's the first time I've seen this this award given to Fitch High School, but and I don't remember this even as an assistant principal. Um, but we were, so we were proud, I, we, this is the first time since in my tenure that I've seen that we we were recognized by College Board for the outstanding work that we've done, and they recognized us with the uh, bronze honor roll um, for for the work we're doing with AP, which I thought was a a nice thing to share with you guys.
I will take questions. I mean, I recognize, wait, Rita, please. I am gonna recognize Liz and then you, Rita.
Matt, this was beautiful, and I wanna applaud all of you for putting this together. But my question is, too, I'd like to see the IB data, too.
Hundred percent.
Because I would like to see numbers about the IB courses and I, you know, the career pathways, as well as the diploma program. You know, what's hap- what's happening with NYPD, you know, in our middle school, as well as what's happening for the high school and their projects. I'd like to have an overview of that, can have that before.
Before you leave.
Before I leave, would be nice.
Okay.
But not essential, but you know, it would be, it would be nice to know.
Um, I apologize, that's not on here, and and I I promise you, I, we we talked about this prior to this presentation. Um, we will get that to you. Uh, I'm sorry, it's not on this, on these slides.
It's fine, just, you know.
Hundred percent, I agree a hundred percent, and I'd be happy to come back. Hundred percent, I agree a hundred percent, and I'd be happy to come back to share that information.
Thank you.
I know. Rita?
Um, yes, I have a couple of questions. One is Carmina, I couldn't quite hear you, but did you say that tenth-grade students were taking AP exams?
Yes, ma'am.
In, in, in what's, in what part of social studies?
AP West History.
AP US History.
Correct. They're learning from beginning of, of origins of America through the present day.
So I've talked about this many times over the years. We've never done very well in our US history AP exams in our high school. And if you look at some of the other surrounding towns, they do two years of a US history program. We've always just done one.
Right.
And, and so when you're saying that tenth graders are taking AP US History, I really challenge that. Besides the US History and European History, what are the other social studies courses that you can receive AP credited?
AP Psychology, AP Government and Politics as well. That replaces our civics class if students choose to take that class.
And, and would you say mostly eleventh and twelfth graders take those as elect?
Yes. Yep. The AP Psychology, AP Government, and AP European History, yes.
And who made the decision to have tenth graders take US History AP exams?
You know, that was a long ago decision. We just had, we had a couple of students, tenth-grade students who weren't going to take it. And then without, you know, refusing to deny them, we just allowed them to take it and, and pretty much.
Well, I mean, they, they take the class first though, right? They're taking the AP US History class.
Yes, yes.
So you can't deny a student to take, not to take it. But I don't understand why tenth graders have time in their course selection.
It re, it's a US History class. So students, tenth-grade students can either take the US, the honors or the college-level US History or the AP US History. They have the options.
So that's a change then that I didn't, I'm not familiar with at all. But you know, you might want to think about two years of a US History course.
I agree with you. But we've been discussing it now, yes. It's been on the, on the table discussing.
That's great. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Yep.
All right. Okay, so now the fun part, we're going to talk about really our action plan, steps we've, we've been taking and, and are going to commit to take over the, the course of this year and hopefully forward. First one is, is one that we talked about last year, and, and we're going to continue to commit to it is really just create a climate at Fitch High School where, where we celebrate growth in, in student performance on, on assessments with SAT, with AP, with IB, with all the assessments they're taking to really celebrate as, as a whole school, the great things that we're doing. And, you know, increasing Falcon pride and making sure that every student's proud of the school that they belong to and, and want to make the best name for Fitch High School. And, you know, our efforts last year, we're going to continue to commit to with utilizing CTL.
Which stands for?
Uh, Commitment to Learn. Really our advisory course in the middle of our day. And that's utilizing our upperclassmen leaders, you know, National Honor Society, our Black Student Union members and other, really just the leaders of our, our senior class, getting into the, the junior, the sophomore, and the freshman CTLs and really just inspiring them to do their very best. Because we all know, me saying it, any teacher saying it, they'll listen maybe. But if, if their, their student leaders are saying it, they're more apt to take them seriously. So I think that was a great move we made last year, and we're going to commit to this year. One thing that they did was getting, we had a member go into each of the CTLs and just guide all the students on how to log into College Board and to look at how they did PSAT eight, nine their fall. And then look at how do they, you know, then look back and say, all right, this is what you got in the fall. All right, now I want you to try to set a goal of what you want to achieve in, in March when you take this test again and actually look at the numbers. They, they were the leaders that, that really led the, the lessons on, on that in our classrooms. And they, they took it very seriously in setting each of the, the kids their goals. And I, I think it's a no-brainer that we're going to continue that as part of our, our action plan. The second thing that's new this year is revisions to our evaluation system using Kim Marshall's plan. Kudos to, to Phil for, for really leading this charge. And Susan, being able to actually meet Kim Marshall over the summer during Admin Council was something that really inspired me. Always been a big believer in all of his work. And really already just the commitment for our admin team to get into more classrooms more often, shorter bursts of time, but getting into the classrooms and then having honest, face-to-face conversations with our teachers is, is gonna, I think, make great change in Groton Public Schools. The conversations I've already had with teachers, I think, has been much more impactful than before. I would fill out a form, I would share it in their mailbox, and if they, invite them to come talk to me about it. And it was productive, but not as productive as this. So I think that, that is going to be a great change. This year, we're returning to our, our Common Data Team process. We used to dismiss at one o'clock on Tuesdays, as I'm sure a lot of you guys remember, and utilize that time, and it was very useful. We would, we would sit as data teams and, and actually look at our, agree upon a common assessment that every single, I, 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 I'm going to go to English instead of math for once. So every single English nine teacher would commit to giving that common assessment for September. And then we would have other cycles where they, we would ensure that we would either look at student data, where we create common learning experience and lessons throughout the, the process. And then we would end the process with post-CFA analysis. So at the end of each cycle, we go back and we look at the assessment that they gave. We look at the strengths and the areas of improvement, and we, we make adjustments to instruction in each of our data teams. And that was lost during COVID, when we really got rid of that one o'clock dismissal and with all the nuances of COVID. And this year is really the first year that we're committing to bringing that back. Not as long, it's during our actual CTL, CTL block on Tuesdays where we actually combine our two CTLs. So, so we, our CTLs are about twelve typically in, in a CTL. So it's a small advisory group, but on Tuesdays, they combine with another CTL group. And we actually designed it this year so that ninth-grade CTLs are combining with eleventh-grade CTLs. And then tenth are combining with twelfth-grade CTLs. And we're hoping that that's going to, in time, develop a mentoring program as well where we can have some of our upperclassmen really lead and mentor our lower grades with everything that has to do with Fitch High School. So that whole process has changed, and I think that that's going to show some good things in the future. Our multi-tiered student support system, which was formerly SRBI, we did make one minor change on the slides, and that was just the new terminology for our intervention system throughout the, the state of Connecticut is MTSS instead of SRBI. But that is just our support system that, that we have to help with interventions for our struggling kids. Last year, we committed to breaking up into teams where Carmina had a group, a, a third of the, the population. I had a third, and Adam had a third of the population. We worked with two counselors each. And in, instead of, in the past, we had waited to get intervention forms filled out by teachers. And then we would come up with plans for each of those struggling kids. Where we realized last year, why are we waiting for the forms to come in as opposed to just, let's look at the data, see which kids are struggling and, and give them proactively the interventions that they need. The one adjustment we made from last year on here is we're asking teachers to share the intervention supports that they're providing in class prior to our meetings so that we already know what they're, they're doing. We don't have to ask them when we're, we're meeting to determine if they need other intervention supports or other, other, other ways to help them succeed. And then the last bullet that, that I'm going to talk about before I give, give the slides to Amy and Carmina are the amazing partnerships that we've already alluded to. Equal Opportunity Schools, we're still committed to working with them. And they're supporting us in making our, our IB and AP classes more full and, and more successful. And then we're continuing our work with NIMSE, National Math and Science Initiative, to provide our teachers with the professional development support that we need to, to give them collaboration opportunities with other teachers of the AP and IB classes, which, which is something that, that is extremely valuable, especially in one district. You know, we may only have one AP Calc teacher, but to give them the opportunity to collaborate with a nation of, of calc teachers is, is extremely valuable. So we're going to continue that work as well. And I'm going to let you guys take over the humanities slide.
Okay. So the first bullet point speaks to Mr. Shoban, what you were saying about, are we looking at other assessments and compare them? So this is, and Laura Johnson, as a matter of fact, is leaving this chart. She's meeting with department chairs, or department members, so she says department members, to look at the AP scores and compare them to SAT scores and GSS scores and other classroom assessments to see what are the areas that students need to focus on the most. One of them, we do know is reading, is reading and the content. We'll talk more about that later on. But she's looking to meet with department members from sixth grade and twelfth grade so we can see what are those areas that overlap, S, uh, S back to twelve. What are those areas that overlap where students are finding the most difficulty in achieving those skills?
And moving on to the next one, the expression that we see a few times on the slide is on-ramps. And by on-ramps, we just mean creating access to our higher-level classes. And we understand that we have to take advantage of the fact that now we're a campus, grade six to twelve are all housed on the same campus. And now that we've made our way through, sort of our post-pandemic era, I guess you could say, now we're looking at sort of leveraging our location into forming teams of teachers and content areas. One of the things that we're focusing on is skill acquisition and common language. So each content is looking at sort of a backwards plan. If I know that my eleventh or twelfth grader needs these skills to succeed well within the high-six tests and also in life, like beyond college career for certain skills, then what can I do in grade six? What can I do in grade seven? Scaffolding, right? What can I do in grade eight? What can I do in grade nine? So we're looking really closely in humanities at skill acquisition and developing common language so that a student that is in the younger grades is beginning to hear these words all the time. And they're also beginning to have this practice all the time. So nothing really seems new when they get into higher-level classes. Instead, they are going to begin to improve, refine, and get more sophisticated and more confident in those skills, in particularly post-reading. When, when they were doing this in LA this year, we started on the word fatigue process. But honestly, all the content are now looking at spending some of that TLI time with some six to twelve teams. So it says the LA just for one server, but it's not the only department that's doing it.
And so in the humanities, we're continuing to increase our reading acquisition, whether it's stamina, accessing, you know, there's various types of nonfiction versus fiction in the six to twelve as well. And fortunately for us, we have the great Cornelius Minor. So Cornelius Minor has, has spread his wings into the social studies department. He was already working with English when he was taking the Bachelor of Arts on time that he was in his department. So we'll continue to work with him throughout our PD. He'll be here in November, I believe. But throughout the year, Cornelius Minor will be focused on helping our students increase their reading abilities.
And he actually goes into the classroom and teaches kind of fishbowl around and gives them really concrete strategies to use for kids to access reading and difficult reading.
Another thing we do, we, you know, six to twelve, we continue is looking at how we're approaching instruction. So not only are we trying to come center with what skills we're looking at, language we're looking at, and kind of like moving our training, we're Cornelius Minor, across all of our content. But we're also looking at the actual instructional approaches and linking up with each other and making sure that we are again scaffolding the instructional approaches too so that students are beginning to recognize, oh yeah, I did this with my seventh-grade teacher. Oh, I did this again with my ninth-grade teacher. And then across the grades, they at least have a little bit more, I think, footing in a time where we need that footing, if anything. We're finding that we're trying to front load as much as we can with foundational skills that may be helping them as they, as they progress through, you know, the other grades.
And to continue, the teachers in the previous grade are teaching those skills. For example, at a ninth-grade level, we're teaching those specific skills needed to do well on those AP and IB courses. Whether it's teaching them how to correctly respond to a short, uh, symmetrisque question or a did it here or some type of prompt that is getting them, that, that requires a ruder. As a matter of fact, when it comes to AP, we all have specific rules that are used for the tools they'll be familiar with. What is expected when I was supposed to, what is expected when I rather should answer a question? So that's beginning in ninth grade. So those ninth-grade teachers are, are familiarizing those students with those skills on its basis itself with the tenth grade. Those tenth-grade teachers are also fully synonymous with those skills for the students to be successful in the eleventh grade and so on.
All right. And then in terms of STEM, the first few bullets are, are very similar. The same talking points that, that Abby and Carmina talked towards. Like, for example, looking at our, our common unit assessments and so forth and how they, they correlate to how we're doing on, on the assessments that we reviewed today. And just common, common themes as, as we're looking at how we write, for example, lab reports and so forth. But I want to highlight right now really the, the bottom two bullets. And the, the, the fourth bullet down there, you know, establishing a common approach to, to course content. I think when I look back at my career as a math teacher, the, the biggest moment for me was when Groton Pub, Public Schools gave me the opportunity to work with Jan Christensen in building a balanced math program. And, and he was like this, that was like the, the most inspiring professional development I had, specific to a content area. And we did a lot of work with building thinking classrooms this, this year with not, not only having a, a book club, reading the book, but also actually getting to see.
Peter Lowenthal.
Thank you. Peter Lowenthal. The, the book is amazing. And, you know, and the ideas are, are, are amazing. And, and I'm seeing it firsthand with like that, that same like charge I got when I, I went to that training. I'm seeing with a lot of our, our teachers that were part of, of this professional development. And going into classrooms right now, and for example, poor Allison Harvey, I, I keep on like, we have visitors from the middle school come in. I'm like, oh, you got to see this in action. And, and unfortunately, the next thing you know, she has twenty extra kids in her, our teachers in her classroom seeing the, the action and process. And basically, what building thinking classrooms, if you're not aware, is the, the kids are up. They're in groups of three, and they're, they're doing the math, they're, they're arguing, they're, they're thinking, debating and, and problem-solving together in groups of three, and they're all engaged. It's, it's been an awesome thing to see, and, and we're already seeing progress with their performance on assessments and so forth, where they're, they're actually taking more risks and trying problems that in the past, we would have predicted a lot of times. They would have just left that blank because that was too tough for them. But now that they're practicing true problem-solving, I think it's going to make a, a world of a difference. So I'm pumped about the, the work we're doing with that. And then the other thing is, is, you know, that, that whole expanding the on-ramp into high-level classes. One thing we, we committed to this year is, is that honors Algebra I in ninth grade. One of the, the, the problems we had before was if they didn't take Algebra I in eighth grade, it was almost limiting what they could do and take their junior and senior year. So, so we, we did bring in honors Algebra II for those students that, that wanted to try challenging themselves in ninth grade and try to get in that, that pathway to, to IB or to AP higher-level courses. So that, you know, a great example there. And at the same time, we're offering these honors Algebra I classes, knowing that it's going to be too much of a challenge for some of our kids, but we want them to try it. So in all of our, our blocks that we're offering honors Algebra I, we also offer an Algebra I, regular Algebra I, so that we have a place, if they fall, we have a net to catch them so that, so that they're, they're, the whole year is not completely lost. And they can take a risk without, without the, the fear of failing. So I think, you know, great, great things that are, are happening to just make achievement even, even, even better at Fitch High School. That's it.
So if I can add though?
Yeah, sorry.
No.
We have.
Just one more, just one more, because we, in our discussion, we know that um, students can't be successful unless they're in school.
Right.
So that has been my goal, and I'm becoming more passionate about the attendance piece. And so in speaking to um, to the administrators, including Lauren and Angela, um, that we're, we're working and speaking of ways in which we can improve our student attendance. Um, I, we were lucky enough to attend a workshop a couple weeks ago, not in change. One of the workshops is about attendance specifically. And they shared some really, really great ideas and really worthy training workshops for the ten. One of them was the Connecticut State Department LEAP program that I'm going to sign up, who Shannon, Shannon was also thinking to do this. So I'm going to do that. So we, uh, but they want us to focus instead of it being a punitive um, towards students or families, it's more supportive. Today I had my first meeting. We sent out the letters, the attendance letter to the families um, last week, and I had a parent just show up because he wanted to talk about both letter. So we're finding ways to support the parents and families versus the, you know, losing credit and whatever else. So before we get to that point, um, so that's, again, without the students being in the class, they can't be successful in all these areas.
And I think going through the pandemic, we also, a lot of our teaching staff and paraprofessional staff dealing with illness and other things. Um, so we, the whole campaign this year is getting better together, showing off together, everybody, adults and kids.
I, I can't believe, I can't believe, how fortunate our children and families are with the presentation that the three of you gave about the passion that you have about our families, our children, and the whole art of learning and how to do that. I just, um, I'm always moved when we have presentations from our staff. But you, thank you guys. Um, and I really do appreciate, um, you know, being a parent of three children who have gone through that, um, the, the secondary system of, for you guys. Um, just really appreciate the hard work, um, and not wanting to stop. And also, not only just wanting to stop and say, okay, we've reached, it's where, who isn't with us? Um, and how do we get them there? What do they need? And so I just wanted to say, before I take any other questions, I did want to say, thank you very much for your passion.
I appreciate that. And thank you to the sport for having a student data manager who works side by side with administration and getting to the nuts and bolts. And she's gotten to all the schools and really helping us to do something with the data.
Lauren, thank you. And Adam, good to see you. You hit mine right, so I didn't.
Good to have the team.
Yeah, it is nice. I will entertain questions about their action plans. What do you guys need? What do you guys like? Liz.
My side.
Yeah.
Could you take off just a so much?
Sure.
So Matt, Rita, um, especially Adam. So good. Thank you very much. But I've heard this question before. So I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of somebody who's, you know, I've, I've heard this question posed many times, and I really would like to see what you're doing, um, myself. We do, the kids who have been challenged to go beyond really need support. We all know that. But what supports are there? I, you know, at one point, a couple of years ago is, oh, well, they can go to Falcon Academy. But when you're in an AP or an IB class, Falcon Academy may, probably will not be able to support you to the depth that you need. And have a student, somebody who is um, you know, a student mentor, that may help, but not necessarily. How are we getting our kids who are really striving to get above and beyond, to get, overcome that leap? What are we doing to help them get there? Besides something like, well, they go to Falcon Academy where they can go. Is there, um, do we have anything in place? And I'm thinking back, back over twenty years ago, and I joined your father at the staff. There used to be a thing where we would have, um, during certain times, there would always be teachers with their, um, in an area. And I don't remember what it was called, but anyway. And maybe you remember, but we did, um, like, Mr. Town was always there available to help the kids with the AP US history. And somebody, and Mr. Croxton was around to aid, take, help with the AP Calc or whatever. We had specialty teachers, and that's when, of course, we had teacher duties though. And that's a big, something that may need to come back in some respects because we're to have that be, this, a time here, we want, want to look at that for our next budget go around, if we can, is to have these people have time available to do in-school tutoring to help these kids. And I don't know if that's a possibility, but you know, I know that there's the C T L and they can go to the C T L. But is there anything else above and beyond that? You've got student athletes, you have student physicians. I'm going to stop.
So, so I'm glad that you give them the foundation, but I'm, I would love to hear what they have to say. If you guys could get more specific, that would be great.
So I'll start and then I'll let you guys piggyback on me. I mean, number one, we do have C T L and, and we have a devoted time where our teachers are free to give the support they need uh, to their, their students. So that's number one. First priority is if uh, kids need help and our AP, IB kids are taking advantage of that. If they need support, they're going to see their, their teacher specifically. Um, we have teachers that, that are willing to stay after and work with their kids. Um, we have tasks. We have tasks where um, students have, and we have a lot of AP um, kids that are taking, in IB, not just AP, but uh, high level students that, that are taking a block of tasks to get the work done and, and, and get the support they need. And, and Falcon Academy is, we do have teachers available in Falcon Academy that can support our kids in IB and I, I, uh, AP level courses. Um, I think we have all those supports in place, um, that, that, that do support. I mean, I think it would be great to bring back something like you were talking about with uh, but that, that's, you know, ti- time challenging and so forth. So we'd have to really look closely at how we were able to present that out.
We talked about a chart to kind of give you all those acronyms and spell them out and kind of showcase all the different ways that kids can get support at Fitch during the day, after school.
In the morning.
In the morning.
I think that needs to be posted some, or somehow promoted better, especially to kids that they come into those programs, if you get stuck, you know, that type of stuff. But anyway, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
No, but to your point, we're, we're constantly thinking about this.
Yeah, I'm sure you are.
I'm, no, I, I'm just gonna say, we hear me, and we are definitely aware and as, especially in humanities, as our numbers grow, we're excited and we're mobilizing. Um, we're constantly talking about those students that are new to AP and, and what we can do, and we're identifying the different ways in which they manifest the need for support. And then in C T L currently, we're, we're grabbing at it as we can, but we are also looking at systematic ways, such as what you were describing, or other ways, and talking, I talked to Cornelius about it last week, um, and, and, and talking outside of Brown to see what other, other schools are doing. Because you know, that is the state's goal, is to, to increase uh, you know, rigor and, and student enrollment in higher level classes. We can, we can reach um, to our, to our colleagues across the state and, and, and find out what other programs are doing. Because we are, we are definitely aware, um, and we're working because.
It can't start at the high school. It needs to start elementary, middle, and high, to have that kind of work.
But I appreciate your comment.
The questions, Matthew?
Also, does anybody else who wants to go first?
Matthew and then Dean.
Okay. So two things. The first, oh, forty-five, fifty years ago, when dinosaurs roamed the earth and I was studying curriculum design, they said we, we need to start with intended learning outcomes first. We build the curriculum to fit that. What I could say today, kind of flips that, you use the word backward. Where you're starting by looking at the ILOs, the intended learning outcomes, in June and soon here, and then getting to, beginning or, or concentrating on structuring their stuff in six, seven, and three to, to grow that way. And nothing but things we will, it's long overdue in our national system, bravo. Second question is where I'm still having a difficult time, and it's not a reproach to anybody. When I look at, I'm looking again at ELA, at the trends uh, for high needs and low needs. When I look at the figure of twenty-nine percent of high need students meeting, of meeting or exceeding benchmarks, I think in one way, it looks like we're terribly uh, increasing the achievement gap. But let me say that I think that the way we classify high needs, because we're using categories that others impose upon us to decide that needs. They're not our categories. There are individuals with I E Ps who are never going to achieve SAT level achievement. And we have the programs to meet their individual needs. But when we include them on this, it's, it's in touch with kids who really are not going to be SAT, SAT ready. And say, we're going to give them what they need, but including them in here, I think the true number of people that we can really help who are SAT achievable is not as bad as what this has shown. So I challenge you in the most loving way to, to look at, at the way we're classifying. Maybe we need a third column, that according to official categories, it's twenty-nine percent. But when we say that we have, we're providing the resources to the ones who can't achieve the classical level of achievement. What's the real number of ones that we could help? I dare say we're, we're doing better than this chart shows. And once we know what, what a real cohort is that we can help to achieve this high level, we can then be easier to, to come up with a way to, to meet that need.
And that's why it's so important that we look at every single student and where they are and what we can do to help support their growth.
And the metric that, that I want to look at, once we are able to tease out this difference in cohort from the formulas that's forced upon us here, is to say, how many of those are meeting or exceeding the state standards or minimum standards for the various disciplines? But then I'm from Brooklyn, I could be wrong.
Lauren, would that be difficult to, to tease out? I saw that.
Sorry.
No worries.
Yeah. Want to hear something funny? Before I got reading glasses, I thought I should get a pair of fogey glasses like this. Wow, this is my reward.
Oh.
All right, so, um, yeah. There's another tactic too, the glass of water.
Yeah, yeah. Notice my glasses.
So the people who took the SATs and the APs, and I use myself as a reference because what else am I going to do? I mean, I see my kids, but my kids have gone to school in another era. As I recall, the kids who took the SATs, it wasn't required. The kids who took the AP classes and therefore the AP exams, it wasn't required. Were the ones who thought they were going to go to college, because they knew that these scores were, the SAT was required in most colleges, to get into most colleges, or the ACT above. An AP you didn't have to take, but it was a good idea if you had that in your transcript. Even better if you scored well enough, that way you might get some credit. So I actually got nine credits out of mine. But who took? Who's, who, the attendance is always self-selecting. So if you're going to go to school for engineering or science, you're going to take AP Calc, AP Physics, probably did not take AP Spanish, or vice versa. I actually took AP. I did best in AP Spanish, then went to. Uh, I got six credits, with the humanities out of that one. Um, don't ask me anything in Spanish anymore, but.
And your point?
Yeah, my point is, background, nobody knows who I am. My point is this, so we've started this push of getting people into, say, AP classes, right? Let's skip the IB for a moment, into AP. And it was recognized at the time of this, that this effort was begun, that, well, a lot of kids are not going to be ready. It's one thing for them to, they want to, or they're controlled, take a chance, et cetera, but they weren't necessarily ready. A lot of that is people just checking themselves out when they shouldn't. A lot of it frankly is they aren't ready. But don't worry, we'll provide support. I think we're probably at the beginning of this cycle, but just to show you where we are, twenty nineteen pre-COVID, twenty twenty-three, where we are, right? So the number of AP students has gone up fifty-two percent between these two figures.
Which slide are you looking at?
I'm looking at this one. We've got from one ninety-two to two ninety-two, that's a fifty-two percent increase. AP student scores three and above, which accounts for, for getting credit, has gone up thirty percent. So we've got more students in, but the proportion of students who are actually making it, making it worthwhile, from the point of view of getting college credit, is down quite a lot, or has not kept up with the fifty-two percent. So, and again, at the bottom, I know that the twenty-twenty is an outlier, but the forty-one, just on this chart, forty-one point seven eight or twelve, forty-two percent is the lowest of these numbers. I'm not going to draw a trend from this, but what I'd like to see is, as we move forward, that this number goes up. We all would like to see that, because that's going to be the measure of how well we're doing to support kids. Yeah, that's, but I, I just want to keep an eye on, on that number. I don't want it necessarily to go back in time, because they're all sort of in the same neighborhood. But twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three, we've got from sixty percent to forty-two percent, getting a three or above on the exam. So that to me is the equivalent of, using analogy, you've taken kids and said, you want to learn how to swim and thrown them in the deep end, but giving them little floatings too. Paddle, paddle, paddle. It'll be a while before they become Mark's kids. So, if anybody remembers Mark's kids.
I know who that is.
I hear my.
But it, I know, I just want to, like, to just, even if they're not getting the three, they're, they're starting to experience, this is what college is about. Um, so, so that, obviously, hundred percent, we want to get that number as high as possible. And, and that's going to come with support and so forth, but those kids are now saying, this is what I need to do. If I want to be successful when I go to college, this is, this is what college courses are like. So them getting that experience has got value too.
And it encourages, it encourages them to take even more high level classes in the lower and control grade, or in the lower grade.
As long as they don't, as long as they don't walk out thinking, well, it seemed like a great idea when I took the course, but now that they're so dismal on the AP exam, I'm walking away from the whole thing.
Yeah, I don't think, yeah, I think it's just opposite. I think if they're getting more confidence, because now they know what's expected, it's what they try, they do love.
I like, I liken this to a, a push over the decades to get more and more kids into college, for example. But having gotten kids with various backgrounds into college, did anybody track to see how well they were doing?
Right.
Did they drop out? How many finished in the four years that are normally allotted for college? That sort of thing. It was great that we got all these kids in, but did they actually get in, you know, what we tracked in the back end, graduate? Graduated and, you know, those numbers I want to look at, that's the thing. I want to look at our numbers and make sure we're actually not hiding the uh.
And the other thing is, there's two hundred and ten kids who did not take the exam, who did not take an exam the year before. So that had to influence too. There were kids that just wouldn't take the exam. They didn't have any motivation, so they took the course. So we have no idea how they would have performed. So there's this whole anomaly.
Take the exam and they go, hey, well, here's your, here's your, what are your exam? I got a one, I'm happy. Yeah.
Yeah, and that happens more times than I like to know.
And then you maybe can improve the next time.
Yeah.
I just think, um, just to offer a little bit of information to Dean's point, um, because we did have a huge number of test savers last year. This is the class that when it is time to graduate from grade eight, they receive their diplomas and their calls.
Yeah.
This is the class that is hybrid in distance and grade nine. Grade eleven, with all of these expectations and these high stakes tests. So to your point, we, we can only grow from here.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and certainly we learned a lot from last year, uh, but I just wanted the, the team to know here who the juniors are.
Yeah.
Who the juniors are. I had three sections. So who are, who were the juniors last year? Um, that's the class. But I do, I do think that the growth model um, is something that we're looking at in the next.
Okay. I mean, I realize, very early stages and we're still in shadow of how we should go. Okay, I mean, I realize during early stages and we're still in shadow of how we should go.
Yeah, um, I have a, I have a quick question for my friends that are on Zoom. Can you see at all or can, can you hear?
Um, we can hear but not see.
No, your sound is not on. Yeah.
And there was about ten seconds or more.
Now, Andrea's saying she can't.
You can hear.
Andrea, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so it's interesting. We have a computer that decided to do, um, its updates.
Now we think we're on it. Tech device power.
Do I do, uh, you know, so, um. So is, is there anyone that's online that would like to speak to the presentation at all?
I would like to say, I'd like to say how impressive it is. It's, um. Beyond the scope of anything I expected. Not that I didn't think that everybody was going to be wonderful. But really, the depth of this is not what I expected. It's really, really. To your credit and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, nice. All right. All right, so, um, I, at this point, I would like to say thank you to our high school, um, staff and our data manager. Um, I, gee, are you on? I'm just going to try to send him home now. If this thing, can you get this to work in any way or it's just got to mind it don't? Okay.
I can stick around till we get to a hundred percent.
I think it's going to happen.
All right, um, I'm going to move us to our last part of our agenda, which actually, guys, should not be long. Because let me just tell you the purpose of me.
So you guys can get home.
Thank you very much for all being here to support our new principal. Oh, no.
There you go.
What does that mean?
We can sort of see you.
That's good. Mark, you want to get it set up here?
You can use this if you want.
Hi, guys. Sorry, I, I think, I think our phone, our computer is being, um, updated. I am now actually going to be doing this through, um, Phil's computer.
Until we get this one going.
Sorry, I'm a little bit distracted, so I am gonna, I am gonna wait.
You're so good at that. Thank you.
You're amazing.
Yes, Lauren, thank you.
How are we doing, Mark?
I'm, I'm wondering if Kate is, was able to keep recording.
Uh, that's going to be on your end.
When I signed on, it said this meeting is being recorded. Right, but I mean, during this update, I was wondering if her.
He signed, he signed on during the update. All right.
Yeah, I think it may affect it back.
Yeah, he might need those. Did all you eat today? Was it going to put up there first?
No.
You owe you guys.
Are we in? Sorry, guys. Now, don't go yet.
Reporting in progress.
Okay, thank you. All right.
And we got three minutes.
Can you guys hear me?
Can you hear me now?
We're good. All set.
Okay, thank you. Um, for some reason, Alan decided to do the update. I'm, I'm calling the meeting back to order, please.
Thank you.
Um, so the last part. So the last part is, um, our bylaws for the Board of Education or the nine thousands had not been updated. Um, since two thousand fourteen, um, actually December, um, two thousand fourteen. And so one of the things that started actually last summer and kind of continued into this, this summer, twenty twenty-three. Was and, um, was a small group of, of board members kind of working together, trying to figure out with Gabe, Cade. Um, about what we wanted to do with the bylaws. What you have in front of you is, um. Amalgam of wording mainly that has come from Cave or the Connecticut Association of Boards of Eds. And what was in the bylaws that, um, that got accept that, that was in place. And so green, the new language, most, most likely ninety-nine point nine percent of the time was cave language. Um, and then, uh, we did do some strike throughs because in some of the, in some of the cave documents, they gave you alternatives. Um, alternative one, two or three, um, in some of them. There is one mistake that was not moved from, thank goodness for Joyce in the superintendent's office. Who, uh, was able to understand me, which is never an easy thing. But if you went to the bylaw of nine, three, two, five.
Meeting conduct?
Meeting conduct, what, what didn't, what did not get put in, and I just don't have access to a colored printer, folks. Um, is what we are going to be adding is, uh, in be, in between the, uh, the paragraph that says the conduct of meeting shall. To the fullest possible extent to that paragraph to number one. We are going to, we were proposing that we have this thing, it's called meeting protocol. And that each Board of Ed member may speak up to five minutes during any discussion. They may not speak for the second and final time until all members who wish to speak have done so. Board members may yield their turn to, um, and there was some dis- discussion about whether, um, we take out the last sentence, which says. Board members may yield their turn to non-member subject to a three-minute time limit. I think we had some discussion where we actually have the follow of the Roberts rules, which is that you can. You, you, as a, as a person, you can, what is the word that I need? I'm looking at you. You, you can, you can advocate your turn to a non-member and they could speak, right?
Yield.
Yield, that's the, that's the name. Um, and then provisions permitting any individual group to address the board at its regular meeting concerning, okay. Um, provisions for permitting any individual group to address the board as its regular meeting, um, at its regular meeting. So, um, not at a committee of the whole, but at its regular, um, business meeting. Um, concerning as any subject that lies within its jurisdiction shall be as follows. And then you have the one, two, three. Whatever. So that was the one, um, that was the one thing that I picked up. Um, excuse me, I absolutely disagree with that. Jay picked up, um, and then I realized that it was just something that didn't transfer over from what we talked about into Joyce. So when you got it, it didn't have that, so I apologize for that. This is, um, because it's such a large kind of document that's policy. We wanted to give it to you ahead of time so that you can look at it, you could ask questions. Um, I, I just think it would be a nice gift to the next standing board to have an active bylaw. And then one that's more current, because if you notice in Cave, like it talks about social media. It talks about emails. It talks about, um, uh, it talks about things that in two thousand fourteen. They, everything was around, but not to the extent that it was. And so I just think that it gave, um, a sense of, um. It, it just brought, brought the board to more, um, thinking and, um. And once again, the places that the committee, um, kept our language, language, it just, it felt, um. Liz, you were there, but it just felt more, um. It felt more true to what, what Grotton has been doing in the process. So that's, that's what this is. And so I will entertain questions about it. Dean.
So just so I have it straight, uh, my understanding, I am not a parleterial. I have a sick feeling that that's going to be my role coming up. If everybody else takes two steps back, I'm looking at each other. Yeah, yeah, keep going. So my understanding of Robert, feeble understanding of Robert. Is that unless your rules say otherwise, the members of the body, the assembly, as they refer to it. Have ten minutes to speak on the topic. Can't speak again until everybody else speaks, you have opportunity, then you get another ten minutes. I don't remember anything in there about yielding to another member. So if you don't use your ten minutes, you can't just say, I'll give you the balance, I think of that, that kind of thing. And I don't remember seeing anything in there, I could be wrong about yielding to, uh, non-member of the assembly. Now, we can do this if we wanted to. So I'm trying to understand, so we're going to go from ten to five, which I don't have a problem with. If my five minutes could probably seem like ten to people. Anyway, thank you. So, but the, um, question of yielding or, uh, time, two questions. Are you proposing to ye, to the ability for a member to yield time to another member? And two, are you proposing? The ability of a member to yield time to a non-member? I might have misheard. This, this is the missing section of the book.
Mm-hmm. Can we get that before?
Yeah, I, I mean, I can actually, um, you can send that into everyone's email tonight, um, so that you can have it. Um, I think, to be honest with you, I think we wanted to kind of be consistent, what's happening in the town council in terms of the five minute. And so that, I think, that was somewhat of the consistency. So, um, and also we give, we've always allotted five minutes for people who come to speak at the regular board meetings. And so I think that there was the need just to kind of be consistent to that. Um, I had not thought through what yielding to another, the time left to another board member. But I think, I think. If I were to take a stab at that, Dean, is I think I would end that sentence by saying. Um, yielding to either a non-member or board member is to follow Robert's rules. Um, um, just so that it's consistent and then we'd also, the board themselves, the board itself does not get into trouble because they didn't follow.
I think they should look at Robert's rules. Question comes up. Or are we going to have the volume of Robert's rules available suddenly, you know, flip through quickly? I think we should have that answer ready, either as adopted policy of ours, but one, two, not going to do this. Yeah, one word is the other.
Okay.
Yeah.
As far as I can remember, I have not seen, remember that county council. Yield to non-member outside of the public question. But in the concept, I'm not seeing the needle. If our goal is to be consistent with county policy.
I think, um, in conversation, um, I think we were feeling pretty good about actually just kind of removing that. And once again, um. Putting of the blanket, Robert's rules and not even what they state for that, um, to your point.
Yeah, I mean, you, you could say our rules are Robert's rules, but that, that is every time it's questioned, it's a turn to Robert's rule. He's better for these stuff that's used all the time, the workhorse rule, he probably ought to be. In here. As far as the deal to go, that I want to throw my two cents on this one. If you were, whoever the timekeeper is, whether it's Joan, new chair. It's one thing to have stopwatch on a member talking, say, I'm sorry, you're up for five minutes or something kind of thing. It's another thing when somebody says, okay, you're up, you spoke in three minutes, okay, now your timer's gone, you get the other two minutes back. That gets over to, you have that multiple timer, you track it loose.
Right.
It's just similar for administrative purposes, say, look, I get my five minutes, if I don't use it all, that's all on me.
That's right.
Nobody else gets extra time.
That's right.
Just easier.
I think, I think that would be, to be honest with you, that, that, I think that that's how we should do it. And I can't speak for the ad hoc committee, but I think that that's what we meant. We just, we, we wanted to, um, because I know in the town council, they now actually have a time stop clock. Um, for five minutes so that everyone can see and, and it's whatever. I, you know, I've had the luxury of, like, I just have, I, I just put the timer on my watch or my phone and, you know, give them a one. Give people one minute warning and that seems to be, that seems to work. Um.
We haven't had an issue, I don't think, on board.
No.
With respect to time limitation. I, I am aware that there's been a town council rule for many years. That limits the time, the numbers may have varied, but the time has been limited. It is said, because in the past, there was a member or two of the council, uh, with us, who talked quite a bit. I mean, or talked quite a bit, so the thought was, we should probably have a time limit for, uh, generally speaking, for, well. That's the origin of a lot of, but I don't think we have an experience here on board of being, with people being wearing products. Going on, yeah, and maybe you too. Um, I don't see that. I had to think backwards. Yeah, so I don't think we have a problem with this for the time or the people that talk, so.
Yeah. So, okay, so if I, um, I, my promise to you guys is that I will, I will clip out what Robert's rule says about yielding and what have you. Do people have a, by, in general, do we have a premise of the five minutes? Do we, how do we feel about that one piece of the meeting is the five minutes that we give board members five minutes?
That's right.
I, I feel like that's.
Because we get a five and a five.
Yeah.
The other, the other problem is with the yielding, is that once one person in the public has spoken. Every other person in the public is going to say, that's not the person's fault.
Right. Usually when there's been people who have come and, um, all I have said is that, because I believe that this is in Robert's rules. Because I remember think going to a cave workshop on this is to say. Um, you know, like, if, if there is a board member that would like to recognize a person, um, just knowing that they then have advocated their right to speak during this one, the, this first round, and, um, I do. Um, at least I've been consistent. I haven't, over my six years, I have been consistent with that. That's what I've done. Um, so our, my other, my other question is, is that there, the policy is to do a first reading and then a second reading. So if we waited until, um, um, in Oc- the end of October, that would be our first reading. And then our second reading would be the end of November, which would be the last meeting of this current sitting board. Um, we can do that. Um, but that's why I wanted you guys to have the document and have you say, I don't understand, I don't have a, a understanding, so that we can kind of get it through. Our other thing that we could do is, um, we could have, next week, we could have a special regular meeting to do a first reading of this, of, of the bylaws. Um, and then in a month, because that's what the bylaws, current bylaws say, is then in a month. Have another special meeting to have the second reading so that this, the new sitting board can be handed, um, the new bylaws. Because if you can tell.
They're a loop. How little.
They're, they're, they're different.
They're complete.
I agree to that. I think that's the best way to do it. Yeah, because these new bylaws are, are just so much more efficient. They align with all the modern.
And the localization and law.
So I want the new, you know, members of the board to have all the, you know, efficient resources.
Right.
It's essential. We, that's one of the things, um, we felt that was very essential for us to have this in place. So that, you know, people who are on the new board come in, um, they have the document to work with. That's, that's not outdated and outwrote it.
Right.
There's language, there's, um, situations that were not covered by any way, shape or form. So that's what we're saying is, um, and I agree, having a special meeting, I think we need to do that. I'd like to see a thing with both on this document, the acceptance of this document or the rejection of it. Um, before this current board. um, before this current board leaves office.
Okay, so, so Susan and I will work on creating a, um, a special meeting, regular board meeting for, um, next week, for the purposes of a first reading, um, first reading of, of this, um, bylaws. Do I have, does that seem like that makes sense for people?
And then we'll. Are you thinking of October sixteen?
Yes.
Meeting?
Okay, yes, yep. And then that just, that actually just gives the, the staff here, if we go forward with the second reading, this just gives the staff that much more time to kind of put together this, um, poli, you know, make it all pretty, um, for Joyce.
Comment, uh, you know me. I read this through, it's wonderful. I did find a couple of places where I found the language, um, little.
I think you sent that to us in the. Did you send it to me?
No.
It was from somebody else.
Because you're so good at that.
Anyway, so what I would propose is that anybody who has any comments to make, get them to, to you, to Joyce.
Well, no, to me.
To Kim first, uh, and, you know, speaking only for myself, you take it any way you want, I'll just make the comments, feel free to ignore it.
A, a, as long as it's not changing, are you talking about changing the philosophy, just wording?
No, I'm not changing, talking about substance, the substance is fine. There are a couple of places where you have to, with two or three choices of words, on the meeting conduct, give it three different words. So I have a suggestion, other peoples may have, people, other peoples may have other suggestions.
Okay, so just send it to me, Matt.
I'll just send it to you.
That'd be great.
Everybody can send it to you.
Yes.
Have a good time.
Such a good time.
All right, um, Andrea.
Motion to adjourn?
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, meeting is adjourned, thank you.